So we will call the Special Board of Education meeting at 7:04 to order. We'll start with the pledge.
Ms. Plard, are you leading us in that?
Her microphone's turned off.
I was, that was muted.
Okay, all right, just I wasn't making sure.
All right, we'll go again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Sorry about that. And with that, our one agenda item tonight is the superintendent's report of budget discussion. Dr. Will, if you have anything you would like to share, otherwise I'll open it up to the floor to the board.
I do. I have a few things I would like to kind of throw out there. Some modifications to our current budget requests or to the superintendent's proposed budget, just to throw out there for the board's consideration. And then, you know, then kind of go from there if you want. So I can, I can either wait for board comments first, or I can just go ahead and talk to that.
I would say we'll give you the floor.
Okay, okay. So I put this together, I mean, just, and it's, it's what I had time to do right now. But Esser, the, the Esser two funds, which is, has been recently discussed and was released by the state of Connecticut. They're federal funds through the state to the districts. I put some information out about those Esser funds. Turns out that the Board of Education for Talon or Talons Public Schools, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get everybody from the waiting room in here. It turns out that the Talon Public Schools is going to get approximately $203,000 in Esser funds. And so this is, this is very good news, and I had shared this with the board and put a bit of information out there about how it might, it might help us adjust our budget. So I, over the last few days, have been trying to gather, you know, information about what kinds of things I would be able to adjust in the budget. And it's not meant, you know, we're not supposed to be planting, we're not supposed to be putting, you know, taking a position, you know, that we had and then funding it with this. But we are allowed to fund positions that would be addressing COVID-related issues. And I asked explicitly about the positions that I'm going to present to you tonight. And I was told directly in the meetings that I was in that we could actually ask for these positions or use these funds for the positions that I'm going to mention. So I'm going to share the screen. This is the report that I've been putting together, and it's going to expand because I'm going to add information about the COO this week, more information about it. But you should be, right now, kind of looking at the Talon Public School logo. And so essentially, what I've done is put together a little bit of info with respect to what I think we can reduce or shift from the budget. So what, what this will allow us to do is this would allow us to actually reduce our budget requests, or it is adaptation of the superintendent's proposed budget, but it's a reduction of the superintendent's proposed budget. So it'd allow for a reduction in the requests, and that could be considered by the board as we develop the Board of Ed's budget for adoption for next week on, on the 10th. So if I could leave this meeting with a sense from the board as to whether or not these are acceptable, as well as any other notes that I can get from the board tonight on, you know, where you want me to go, what kinds of things you want considered, then I will prepare the Board of Ed budget document accordingly, and that will be what ultimately, you know, you vote on next week. So essentially, to, before I get to Esser, I recommend a reduction in what you know as line 730. There are a couple of lines that kind of roll into that. But I recommend reducing the following items or transferring them to a capital request in the Educational Reserve Fund. One or the other, but either way, I recommend taking them out of this budget and funding them either, you know, separately through ERF or not at all. So this is the first set of reductions, would be 55,631. The second set of reductions would be covered by Esser funds. Esser funds have to be spent by September of 2023. But we would be using these Esser funds to cover two positions. One is the school counselor, the other one is the social worker that were listed in the position. So there were 5.5 positions. You may recall that there's a speech language pathologist, there is a behavior intervention specialist, there is an English language teacher. There is an ABA teacher. All of those are core to fulfillment of IEP programs, things like that. These, these positions were specifically towards a social emotional development and mental health. Social emotional development and mental health is, is covered explicitly under ESSCR, School Safety and Social Emotional Wellbeing of the Whole Student and Our School Staff. So in the meetings that I had this week, as I said, I asked explicitly if these positions could be covered through Esser, and the response that I received was that they could be. So they're put, put forward to the Board of Ed tonight as a reduction to the superintendent's proposed budget and a transfer of those funds to be paid for through the grant or through the Esser funds. We do still have to fill out a grant application for Esser. We have been told that this grant application is going to be more involved than its earlier brethren. So we're going to have to do a justification. And in that mindset, it's actually easier to do a justification of these types of positions versus a justification of some, I'll say, 100 other items. You know, this would be actually something more straightforward, and we do have mechanisms for gathering data about the impact of these positions already in place. So that would make what's going to be a little bit harder of a process in the application execution a little bit easier because this would be much more straightforward, and we already have things in place that could help us provide information about it. So, you know, there's a couple of good reasons why this, this would be a reasonable way to go, and that would actually probably help us achieve getting that Esser two grant finalized. We have been told it'll be a little more involved than the first one. And some, some grants are highly involved and take a tremendous amount of hours to complete, other ones aren't. My guess is Esser two is going to take a little bit longer to complete. But I think we're positioned well if we have, you know, something like this in there as part of it. So right now, those would be used to reduce the superintendent's proposed budget as we move it to the Board of Ed budget. The burden would be less, you know, out of our operating budget. So it's 143 and 55, a reduction in the budget of 199 to 01. The addition would be an addition of $40,011 for the chief operating officer. This would allow me to make the compensation for that position $130,000, which would be, which would be in an appropriate range for such a position. And, and I believe it would be in the range of what would allow me to place a person in that position. So that's, that is an addition to the budget, and the 199 is the subtraction to the budget. So this particular table here kind of gives you an idea of all of it together. You know, here are the things that would be coming out of the budget, here's the thing that would be going into it. So the difference is 159, 190, reduction in the budget. That would be about a 3.2% increase versus a 3.59. So we would go down to a 3.2% with these changes. And I, you know, continuing to look through some things as well to see if there's anything else that can be, you know, moved or modified. One notable thing here is that this budget also does require a position transition. There was a financial assistant in the budget that would be changed to be a human resource business assistant, which is what had been discussed prior, that the chief operating officer would require an assistant to work with them. And that, that would, you know, that would make this disposition work when we're divvying up duties and looking to kind of move things around a bit. So, so that's an important part of it. I don't think we can actually do this without it. But that does not require anything more as it is already, you know, something in the budget that we could just transition for that purpose. Change the name of that position as it does not have a person in it right now. The person in it, you know, passed away. So we are, you know, we're in a unique position to be able to kind of make this work the way that I had talked about before. So at this point, I won't continue going on and on about it, but this is where I landed as of this afternoon. And I continued to work on this, but I just didn't have time to get any further before the meeting tonight. So that, that essentially is where it ends, is at a 3.2% with the COO position and the reduction, not reduction, but maybe transfer of how it is spent, how, you know, we are funding it to the ESSER two grant versus being in our operating budget.
Thank you for that, very thorough. Board members, raise your hands. All right, I sell Rainey first.
Thank you. Um, can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Dr. Willet, for doing this. I think this is good. I have just a couple of questions. One question would be regarding your list of equipment. I mean, I guess it doesn't necessarily matter how you came up with that. I know there's more Promethean boards in that line item. So I'm not sure how the three that are listed here, I think it was three, I don't know, it went by quick. Are there more that we would potentially want to move? Oh, there's three, there's four, okay. But I thought, I'm not sure how many there were in total in the whole list. Are there potentially more that we might want to move or?
Well, when I, when I talked to, you know, I had meetings with various staff on this, and this was the, these are the items that I felt could, this year, perhaps not be part of it. Anything beyond that, there were reasonable arguments as to why, you know, they should not be included in, in, you know, in a reduction such as the one I'm trying to make. Having said that, you know, if I do go into other things, it's going to have much more of an impact on a program than these do right now. These were, you know, programmatic things that would help, but that, you know, I think, I think personally, we could, we could either move to ERF or that wouldn't be, you know, we would not hamper operations not having them. But, you know, but they are things that have been requested for some time, and that's why they were in there. They, they were things these individuals or these groups felt were necessary to help, you know, improve their program. So I just don't think now, you know, right now, I think, given the circumstances we're in and the budget that is, you know, that's being presented, that we could take these out, figure out how to maybe alternatively manage this. So that's why I put it on here. But if I didn't mention it, it's because there was some significant resistance to it being added.
Okay. And my second question is, so we've got 143 being used of the 203, so what happens to the other 60?
We would try to apply that against other coronavirus pandemic, you know, impacts. And so that, that would be remote learning, you know, overtime, staff development, essentially family and connectivity issues, academic supports, learning loss. It could be used to fund extended school day programs, extended school year into the summer programs. So I'm leaving a little bit left for that because, you know, we need to get a good idea this summer as to what the overall impact of this was. And it might give us some flexibility, not only now, but as we move through next year in developing, you know, extended school days and certain things for maybe groups that, you know, that we feel can avail themselves of it. So there's a number of options available under Esser two. This just, this particular, this is a commitment of these funds to reduce it, but leaving that 63 sort of open for some of these other things that we have not fully developed yet.
Okay, so there, it's not going to anything that's in the current budget, you're holding it to the side for potential future, you know, use?
Yeah, until, until we get a handle, because this, this allows us to carry it to September 2023. So this could offset something in the future for us.
Okay. All right, that's it for me for the moment, thank you.
Thank you, Rainey. Madhu.
Thank you. Um, I've asked most of my questions already, but I guess I just wanted to get like a, kind of a final wrap up from you. Um, do you think that this budget is adequate and is it enough to strategically move our school system forward?
Yeah, I, I think within a pandemic year, this is really, you know, the budget that is put forward is, is important in helping us maintain appropriate services. And I guess, you know, from the standpoint of where we are in the pandemic, the objective would be to prevent us from sliding backwards. You know, there's a lot of kids that we want to make sure are receiving services that they need and that we're making up for some of the things that happened over the last almost year now. So, you know, I think we move forward in certain things, you know. I think we've talked about lighthouse, certain expansion programs, you know, we are, we have fewer kids that are considering other programs, and we've made significant advances in our own, you know, internal programs, and we're not giving those up. So we're continuing to move that forward. Is this a, is this a massive leap in the lighthouse objective? It is not this year a massive leap, but it does, it is designed to, you know, help ameliorate or address the, the issues we're facing as we hopefully exit the, the, you know, the center of the storm of the pandemic and start to come out of this thing next year and, and, you know, and work on addressing issues and building what, what has been impacted. So I think it's, it's a year where we're addressing, you know, the issues of the storm we've just gone through. We don't make massive leaps in terms of, you know, in terms of, say, lighthouse program type activities, but in this year, I'm not sure that we would be able to do both, you know.
Okay. So given our past increases of basically less than a percent for the last few years, when you average them out, given the fact that we're also not keeping up with the cost of, you know, living, what would you say to those that would balk at a 3.2% increase, given our prior increases? Is there any way that you could help explain, you know, how this benefits the community at large?
Yeah, you know, um, we do have a, I think we have a really good, very good record as a school district of, you know, providing budgets that, that are very, very reasonable. I think I'm trying to pull up the, the data right now, but I put it in the superintendent's proposed budget document as well. You know, we, I think the last five years have been less than 1%, you know, on average, and certainly the last three years. I, I think you can't, you can't go through that many years of that without expecting there to be a bump up somewhere. And I think this is certainly our year of bump up. You know, we, we also, last year, I think, you know, really did everything we could and continue to, to try to make sure that, you know, the reasonable budgets are put forward to Talon. I think, given the track record, it's time now for a budget that, you know, is, is a little bigger than, than what typically was, you know, has been asked or has been put, you know, put forward. This one at a 3.2%, I would say is necessary at this point to kind of rebalance some of that, to address the needs that we have to address. And, you know, and after a series of years, you know, five years, certainly three years, that are less than one on average, I think, you know, it's important that we do this. There isn't anything in this budget that I've taught, you know, we, with the meetings that I've had programmatically, you know, everything that's in here is meant to actually do some, some, some level of either cost avoidance, you know, by doing certain things will avoid the cost of doing other things later. Or aggressively meeting the needs of the pandemic, which, you know, obviously is, is something that we can't ignore. So, you know, I think it's this year, I would, I would say, more than any other, really. I, I think this 3-2 really needs to be, you know, needs to be supported. I think it would be very difficult for us not to do that. It would have some ramifications I don't think we really want to, to endure.
Given, yeah, given that, you know, our expenditure per pupil is among the lowest in the state, it leads me to believe that we know how to stretch a dollar and maximize every dollar that we get. So thank you for that, I appreciate it. That's all for me.
Thank you. Jacob.
Thank you again, Dr. Willet, for putting this together tonight. It looks, looks very good. I did have a couple of questions, though. So about funding these positions for the Esser two funds. I know you said that they go through, through 2023. And maybe our accountant friends can answer this a little bit better than I can, but because we would still be holding them on for more than one year, it's not like we're just hiring the counselor position for, you know, the next fiscal year, and then we're letting them go. It's going to be a permanent position. I, would it make more sense to just keep that up in the regular budget? And then I was thinking for Esser, you mentioned that about 0.2% of the increase that is proposed in this budget is from COVID-related expenses, more material expenses, I assume. Would it make more sense to spend that money more up on that sort of stuff, like the cleaners and the PPE, and maybe just keep those positions in the budget? In the, in the regular budget?
Um, you know, I, I think that, you know, obviously there, that it makes sense to consider doing, you know, material items. There are other supports for some of the material items. This, this particular grant does allow us to use it for personnel, which is, which is somewhat unique. It's not, that's not true of everything. And so, so that's, that's an advantage of Esser two over, over some of the other ones that we have access to. Having said that, you know, the idea would be that as we move forward, you know, we do have retirements, we do have adjustments, and, you know, we may be able to, in the coming year's budget beyond this, make an adjustment, you know, that would allow us to keep these positions over some other position that, you know, that has retired, something like that. Because a year from now, I'm hoping that some other, you know, that we have walked clear of COVID and that there's, you know, there are some other options we can start to consider, there may be some retirements. So what this does is it buys us a year where we can, you know, see what's happening from a budget standpoint. And as we enter the, you know, fiscal year 23 budget planning, that we, you know, we may then be able to make some of these, you know, transition to jobs that are no longer needed or are part of the picture. So it gives us time to do that. And it's also something that does apply directly. So when we do file for Esser two, these two things can be, I think, easily defended, and they go through the Esser two process pretty, in a pretty straightforward manner. The data that we would have to gather for this, like I said, we already have. If we were to do 100 material items, that's a, that's a much harder thing, I would think, to put through that Esser two grant process. We can do it, but it, it actually would be something more complicated to do. I don't think we wouldn't get it. It's just, we would spend maybe 10 human hours on these, these two or three things going into Esser. We could spend 40 or 50 human hours on 100, you know, separate material items. So it's just, it's just another way of doing it efficiently and also taking the budget down a bit, which I think was, was on people's minds. And it gives us a year to adjust as we, you know, go into that next fiscal year. Hopefully, things will be looking a little different. We've had some retirements, we can shift some resources. And then, you know, taking those two on doesn't feel the same as taking on, you know, as many during this particular year. So that's kind of the thinking behind it, but of course, you know, it does make sense what you're saying as well.
Okay. And I'll have to think a little bit about that. I mean, I'm still trying to process some of the information tonight. I guess the other question, though, for 7:30, I was thinking of kind of along the same lines that you were about kind of moving that stuff over to the ERF. Is there any other kind of hardware, technology hardware from that line that we could consider paying for through the ERF? I think, are there more Promethean boards, I think?
Yeah, I, I can. Some of that stuff has a sort of cyclical aspect to it.
Yeah.
So the only issue with taking too much there is that then the next year, everything is always a deeper climb, you know, versus replacement equipment. You know, replacement equipment is a steeper climb than something that is more than that. Most of these are kind of, you know, additions. Some of the other stuff is set up as, as a sort of replacement. So if we don't have it, then it's just a steeper climb, you know, the following year as we kind of, you know, have an amount we have to get back up to, or we have some of these devices we must replace. So these don't, these are not things that must be replaced right now. Some of those other items are things that will typically be on a replacement trajectory. So not having them out of the operating just means that now that something that would be an increase the following year versus kind of having a placeholder for it. So I can cut more deeply into any of, you know, things like that, but it does have that residual effect.
So for some of these items here, I'm just going to focus on the Promethean boards, because we've been talking about it. Are these replacing smartboards or are these like, for example, the high school art ones? Are those something, do they have something equivalent in the classroom right now, or is this like an addition that would be new?
The Prometheans overall are replacing the smartboards. The software and things like that aren't available for these older units anymore, and so they've been getting phased out. They also require short throw projectors, which are, you know, really, they, they die quick. They have, they're hard to replace, they're expensive, and the bulbs and all that other stuff. So they are being phased out, and the Prometheans are being phased in. Some of the other questions, I think, were from either FFC or here, one of the previous meetings. They are upgradable and probably will be, you know, at least 10-year lifespan. So that's, that's why some of them could be capital, but, you know, they do need to, they, they still, like anything else, have sort of a replacement cycle to them. And they're still, we are still in the process of replacing some of the ones that you can't run anymore, and the software doesn't work, and the short throws aren't working, and that type of thing with these.
Yeah, and that's why I think it kind of makes sense to maybe use the ERF for our savings account for some of those items. But, uh, thank you, Dr. Willet, and that's what I have for questions right now, so I'll, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Jacob. Griffin.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Willet, for putting all this together. I actually probably could have put my hand back down, because Jacob pretty much covered everything that I had. So I'm, so thank you for the explanation, because that was one of my first questions about the kind of positions that we're probably going to want for future years. So it sounds like, you know, you have a kind of a plan for, for those. And I just wanted to say also that I would absolutely be in favor of taking that $55,000 out of the ERF. I think we have, you know, a fair amount of cushion in there, and I think that this is a small enough withdrawal, if you will, that we still have, you know, enough in there in case of, you know, any sort of future emergency or anything that comes up with technology or special education. So, um, that's really all I had, so thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Griffin. Anybody else? Oh, looks like we had a lot of questions answered prior to this workshop. I did have the same question about the ERF, just in terms of, you know, thinking about how the past couple of years, the budget has had relatively low increases, and now we're seeing that bump in a year that, you know, is tough. And I think there's still a 10% unemployment rate in Talon. So my thought process is, you know, if we have money in the ERF that can, you know, help alleviate some of, you know, the general fund tax burden, I'd love to, you know, see that approval on our agenda, but that's really my only recommendation right now. I think the budget looks good, I'm, I'm happy with it. The, oh, actually, I did have another question on the Esser funds. Is that something, it's a grant, is that something we can reapply for?
Well, it's a great question. Yeah, no, they, that is not going to keep going. It has a end date of, it is going to, they need, well, let me say this, I doubt that there'll be an Esser three. I mean, there could be, but I don't, I'm not hopeful there would be an Esser three. I think probably Esser two is as far as this is going to go.
Okay.
But, and everything has to be expended by, by September of 2023. So it, it needs to be wrapped up by then for, in terms of expenditures. And Esser two had to be wrapped up by December, so that's already. And S or two had to be wrapped up by December. So that's already, you know, kind of done. It would be great, but I don't think so. I don't think so.
All right. So I think that's all I had. Really? Nobody else? So we we voted on this tonight?
Well, so if if I can get the board's direction, if you're in support of this approach, then I will start working on the Board of Ed's document with the, you know, with these changes. And, you know, you can, if there's a desire for me to do something else, letting me know now is good, too. Because I'll be starting to create the, you know, the Board of Ed's adopted budget or a Board of Ed budget to present to you next week for adoption, hopefully adoption. So any other notes or tweaks, you know, you want me to make, letting me know would be good. And certainly, you know, in the next meeting, you can, I just have to make sure I update the entire document that night if we're going to be making any kind of major change, you know, that night. Or, you know, for, we have to get it over to the town shortly after that meeting.
So how does everyone feel? You want to just go around, around the virtual table and just say how we feel about the budget? Not getting any objections. I see, I see Sophia nodding. So Sophia, go ahead.
Well, Dr. Willett, I want to say thank you for answering all of my questions. I hope, I probably had a lot of rookie questions, and I appreciate you taking the time to explain everything and your patience. But this, this budget looks very logical to me. And I appreciate that it takes into consideration this year that we've had in our district. This, the coronavirus has affected so many of our families, and I'm happy to know that you are actively providing supports for our children. And I think that is so important. And this budget increase seems very logical to me, so I'm in support of it.
Thank you, Sophia. Rini, why don't, why don't you take a turn?
Okay, um, you know, I think it's a good budget. I I am kind of like Christina you hinted at. I'm a little worried about the level of the increase. On the one hand, you know, given, you know, many people out of work or businesses that have failed and things like that. With that said, if you look back over the last several years, you know, with these very small increases, I mean, this, if you amortize it over those last, say, four years, it's really, you know, kind of gives you maybe, I don't even know if you get to one percent a year for the last four years. So there's, there's that to consider as well. And, you know, we've had increases, you know, obviously contractually that that have to be covered. You know, we've had some drop in the, you know, number of students. So it's a balancing act. And I think that, you know, well, we need to support the students. That's really the most important thing. So, you know, I I like that we're adding the COO in there. I think that's going to be a nice change and a help overall. It's a good support. So, so I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you, Rini. Madhu?
So, um, yeah, I think I'm very happy with it. I think it moves our school system forward, as Dr. Willett explained. You know, we're starting to keep up with the cost of living. And, you know, like Rini said, if you average it out over the last, you know, several budget cycles, I mean, I don't think we're even at a one percent. I think, looking at it, there doesn't seem to be any bloat or any pork or anything like that. Everything that's being asked for is logically explained. Everything that's being asked for does help our kids, which is, you know, the most important part. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with it.
Thank you. Did Dana or Tony join us?
I know Dana did, I believe, and I'm looking for Tony.
I'm here. I'm sorry. Sorry for my delay. I'm traveling for work and I hit a snowstorm up north. So it took me a lot longer to get here than I had planned. I don't, I don't want to take people's time up, because I think that there's some stuff that I that I missed that I can probably catch up with my peers as far as what the the previous budget that Dr. Willett had provided us a couple of meetings ago, as well as some changes that we had discussed already, which is what he's putting on the, on the board right now. I definitely am for funding, you know, the proper support, whether it comes to administrative level, all, you know, down to, to, you know, materials for the, for our students. I would also agree that we have not funded our our budget properly over the last several years plus. So unfortunately, it's where we are right now, kind of digging ourselves out of a hole, if you will. And in order for us to continue to support our school systems and to support our children, we need to fund that, right, and support our educators. But also, it helps increase our property values. It helps make Tallinn a destination place for families to to move to when, when the cornerstone of their community is a strongly, a very strong and solid foundation school system. And with that comes funding. Any one-offs, I will, I will probably pepper you with those, Dr. Willett, if you could give me some time, because I, again, I don't want to waste people's time, because I was, I was tardy this evening. But I am excited about the COO position. I'm excited to see the counselor and the social worker on there. That's, that's fantastic news. But other than that, again, I do apologize to everybody for my tardiness, but thank you.
Thank you, Dana. And don't apologize. We're happy you're here. Jacob.
Okay, um, so, again, thank you, Dr. Willett, for answering all of our questions and putting all this hard work up into making a proposal that that we would like and we would vote on. At this point, I'm feeling pretty comfortable with it. You know, I do share concerns about, you know, the size of the increase. I can see it up on both sides, but I do feel that everything we're asking for is quite justified. I can go to the town council and defend it at a joint meeting for why we're asking for these things. So at this point, I I'd be fine to see some sort of proposed document with these changes that you listed here tonight for us to vote on on next Wednesday.
Thank you, Jacob. Griffin.
Thank you. Yeah, I also am in support of this budget. I think that it really does address everything that, you know, we've kind of been concerned about as far as the effects of COVID and any learning loss and moving forward with with those kind of things. I think we've also, you know, with all of the one-to-one technology, I do think that we are moving the district forward. And I know that, you know, just some of my notes here, we've got, you know, a lot of positives with online subscriptions and technology and softwares and all that. That's in this budget this year that I think is really important, since we're going to be really moving to the one-to-one. You know, unfortunately, I think COVID forced us into that. But I do think that Dr. Willett's budget, you know, really addresses the needs that we're going to have, you know, to continue with the technology. So overall, I, again, I totally agree with the COO position. And thank you again, Dr. Willett, for making that happen. So, yeah, I don't really have much else. I definitely support this budget. And like Jacob said, I think we can really get behind this to present it to the council. So thank you.
Thank you, Griffin. I think the only person I have left is Tony, and I don't think he joined us. Nope. Oh, me. So I, I am definitely in support of what you've presented here. I, I think a lot of innovation went into this, a lot of hard work on the board's part, you know, truly understanding it in the committees and and in these workshops. I guess my one caveat is, I will only vote yes if it's for a five-day-a-week school week. I know you probably can't make promises, but.
I mean, I, I, it better be. I don't want to be doing this stuff anymore either. I, I, I'm hoping for a return to some, to a higher level of normalcy next year. I, I really am. So, yeah, but I, no one could have a crystal ball, but I think that is in everybody's thoughts. Yes.
Perfect. All right. With that, if no other board members have anything to add, I will move on to public participation. Since Tony's not here, Jacob, would you mind timing?
I can time.
Okay. If any member of the public would like to speak, please raise your hand or dial star nine on the phone. Oh, I see. Mary Rose.
Yeah, hi, Mary Rose Duberik, thirty-seven, Ryan Road. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mary Rose. Liz.
Hi, Liz Costa, fifty-four, Josiah Lane. I just want to say thank you as well. I hope you will fully support this budget. I still question whether the S or funds should be used in the way you're using them. I think they probably are better off used long term, but I know Dr. Willett has a plan. I will say, listening to another parent today talk about the benefits of our lighthouse project and other projects in the school and, you know, systems in our school, it is really apparent that it contributes to the good of our town. And hopefully you will continue to support that social worker position as well as other positions in the future to support that program. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Anybody else? Colleen.
Hey, Christina, can you hear me?
I can.
Hi, I just want to follow, but, sorry, Lisa, not Lisa, Lisa, excuse me. Colleen, you to check twelve, Woodbury Hill, Tallinn, Connecticut. I just also wanted to say the same thing. I think you guys have worked extremely hard. And I think it's a very fair budget to put forth. And I'm glad to hear many board members saying they can get behind this and defend it when they meet with the town council. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Colleen. Anybody else? With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Jacob Mari, I move that we adjourn the February third Special Board of Education meeting at seven forty-six PM.
Madhu, Indushatala, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Rini?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
And myself, I am an aye as well. Have a good night, everyone.